Okay, well. We'll call this meeting to order. First thing, if I can ask Mr. Meadows if he would lead us in invocation of Pledge of Allegiance.
Absolutely. If we can rise for a moment of silence, if you're able, then I'll lead us into pledge. Let us pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Kind of a motion to move into work session.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Supervisor Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Supervisor King?
Aye.
Supervisor Demonts?
Aye.
Supervisor Bone?
Aye.
Supervisor Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Six aye.
Board members, this evening, we have two items under work session for your consideration. The first is a discussion of the fiscal year 2024-2028 Capital Improvement Plan. This is an update from the plan that was formally adopted last year. And then after that presentation, we will have an opportunity for you to have any questions or discussions related to the fiscal year proposed 2023-2024 budget.
Thank you, sir.
So, Mark, I'll turn it over to you this evening.
Okay, good evening. I'm pleased to talk to you tonight about our capital improvement program for fiscal year '24 to '28. So I wanted to give a little background information and talk a little bit about the difference between the operating budget and the capital budget. And as you know, the operating budget is the annual spending plan for day-to-day operations. The county administrator presented the county's proposed operating budget at the end of February. You guys have been discussing that over the past several weeks. The county's capital improvement program is a multi-year spending plan for the construction of major infrastructure. It's a five-year plan for capital projects that are either funded with debt proceeds or funded with direct cash contributions, which we call cash to capital. And this program is linked to the county's operating budget. So what is the capital improvement plan? Well, for one, it's a living document, meaning that it will change as priorities change and as projects change. And that can be either in project cost or in scope. In order to qualify, projects must have a useful life for five years or more and cost over a specific dollar amount. For Montgomery County, that dollar amount is $50,000. However, generally speaking, when we talk about capital improvements, we're talking about brick and mortar, we're talking about million-dollar projects. Capital projects differ from capital outlay items that are in the operating budget based on the useful life and overall cost. Capital projects are bigger in scope. Capital outlay, on the other hand, which are lower dollar items that are funded in the operating budget, generally have a useful life of a year or more but are considered more routine. And a formal CIP is linked to the operating budget and serves as a forecast of future operating expenditures. This is really important because new infrastructure comes with new operating costs. You have both program operating costs and facility operating costs. These costs are funded in the operating budget, and the CIP has a big impact on the county's budget and its overall five-year plan. So last spring, the board approved the county's first fully-funded CIP for fiscal years 23 to 27. The fiscal year 24 to 28 CIP is an update. It consists of 18 projects funded over five years. No new projects are currently proposed for the fiscal year 24 to 28 CIP. Because the CIP is multi-year in scope, the fiscal year 24 to 28 CIP is an updated version of the previous approved CIP. Total budget expenditures for the fiscal year 24 to 28 CIP are $61.3 million. I'll talk a little bit about some significant changes that occurred between last year's CIP and this one. As you remember, the penny value in the fiscal year 23 budget was roughly $903,000. Because of the county's recent general reassessment, that penny value is about $1.2 million. So as the penny value changed for the real estate in the proposed budget, we changed the amount of transfers being proposed for this upcoming budget. So we reduced a half a cent on both sides, the county and the schools. Total transfer still increased by little over $90,000. However, funding for future county capital projects was reduced by about $316,000 per year. Fire and rescue capitals, the fire and rescue capital allocation increased by $407,000. Again, you add those together, you get the $90,000 increase in the transfer. The amount of funding for future school capital projects, again, it was reduced by half a cent. Still, total funding increased by $90,000. And then with that, all county projects remain fully funded throughout the CIP, and we have $30,861 remaining for future projects in fiscal year 28. For the magistrate and court services facility project, we have a revised cost estimate of $5.8 million. As plans have been refined and due to inflationary increases in construction costs, total project cost increased by roughly $1.1 million. Allocation of funds that are available for future capital projects will cover the increased costs. Christiansburg Library Improvements Project was a project, it was a small project that was contained in last year's CIP. And if I remember correctly, it was Supervisor King that had asked me at that time whether or not that this particular project could become part of the Christiansburg Library Project, whether or not we were duplicating. So we looked at that, and we determined that we could fund that project with the Christiansburg renovation. So that project was removed. And then the board did not include that project when we did the fiscal year 23 county capital appropriation in October of last year. For the Eastern Montgomery EMS facility, that total project remains at $4.7 million. Project costs will be updated once the project is fully designed and scoped. And the Christiansburg Library renovation is scheduled to begin in fiscal year 25.
The, excuse me, the other project that we are waiting for some information on is the Auburn Park recreational facility opportunity. As you're aware, we have the funds set aside for the construction of the park in Reiner. There's been discussion among the board about an indoor facility that might could be built as part of that project. We are continuing to work with A and E firm to get a better cost estimate of what that's going to be. We will bring that back to you once we have that. But for tonight's meeting, we do not have a number that we are comfortable with at this time bringing forward.
Talk a little bit about the American Rescue Plan Act funding. So the county received $19.1 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds. And if you remember, the federal government allowed for us to have a standard allowance, which would allow us to use up to $10 million for any governmental purpose. And so we, together, decided to allocate $10 million to the capital program. So I'll go through how that was allocated. So Eastern Montgomery EMS facility received $4.7 million. The magistrate court services facility received $4.7 million. The Creed Field Lighting Project received $206,000, almost $207,000. And the Blacksburg Library Outdoor Improvements Program or Project received $423,500. So there was a $10 million standard allowance that could be used for any governmental purpose. Then we had a remaining balance of $9.1 million that was available for specifically eligible uses. And we allocated $6 million for broadband matching funds, $1.5 million for the PSA water and sewer projects already approved by the board. And then I believe at your meeting just a few minutes ago, you heard about the potential completion of the PSA Reiner project, which would take up the remaining $1.6 million. And that would allocate all of the ARPA monies for not only the CIP, but the other projects that we've identified.
And Mark, what we talked about as well is waiting to see what the bids on that Reiner project come in at. And if we don't need to use that entire $1.6 million, there may be some other projects, excuse me, that can be reallocated to. We have till the end of fiscal, we have until the end of calendar year 24 to allocate all the ARPA money, so we still have a little time if things shift around a little bit between now and then.
So as Craig said, the funds must be obligated by December 31st of 2024 and expended by December 31st of 2026. And as we sit, all ARPA-funded projects are expected to meet those deadlines.
I have one thing I'd like to add before we get to the question part. I've just wanted to reiterate on this seventh slide. We have $4.7 million included for the Eastern Montgomery EMS facility. We don't know what that number's going to be. It's going to change. We know it's going to be different, but that's our estimate at this time. We don't have concrete numbers for that because we don't have plans drawn for that yet.
And with that, I will take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mark. We appreciate the presentation. We'll go around the room to see if anyone has any questions. Let's start off. Supervisor King? All right. And come back. Supervisor Fidzikowski?
I don't have any questions.
Supervisor Shepherd?
Just one. The magistrate court services facility, you got $4.6 million, or almost $4.7. Is that, is that a low estimate, or is that, you think that's pretty close?
The magistrate facility last year had an estimate of $4.7 million. That estimate's been revised to $5.8 based on a construction estimate that the county received to do that facility.
The difference in those amounts is due to the fact this slide you're looking at is for ARPA funding, and then the rest of it's going to get paid for with county dollars.
Yeah, all right. That's all I have.
Supervisor Bone?
Slide five. On slide five, last bullet, all county projects remain fully funded throughout the CIP with $30,000. We probably committed some capital monies to the schools, and that includes our commitment to the schools.
It includes the transfer that's in the proposed budget.
Thank you. And then on the next slide, I know Supervisor Shepherd just asked this question, but at the second bullet on slide, first big bullet, second minor bullet, slide six, the $1.1 million. I'm not quite sure what allocation of funds available for future capital, county capital projects will cover the increased costs, where that money came from specifically.
So what that means is, is that each year you allocate, well, this year you're allocating two cents of the real estate tax rate. That included one penny for future capital projects in prior years. Now it's a half of a penny. We took the accumulated monies that we had for cash to capital up to this point that hadn't been allocated, plus the half a cent going forward, and moved those monies around to maximize the use of those dollars. So everything is allocated except for $30,000 in fiscal year 28.
Okay. Doing the fungible thing.
That's right.
We're maximizing the use of the dollars that are available.
Okay. One more question. Slide eight. Are all of the projects all committed already, all these dollar amounts all committed already? Like, we voted on them already?
Yes, we have. You voted on the CIP, and we appropriated the monies last October to allocate all of the funds, with the exception of the $1.6 million at the bottom of the sheet that you all discussed this evening.
Excellent. Thank you. Great job.
Supervisor Demonts?
No questions. I really appreciate the update, though. Thank you.
Supervisor King?
So, to go back on what Supervisor Bone was talking about, the one for the magistrate and all, at one point, go over a million dollars to finish it up out of the ARPA money?
ARPA funds that were allocated were $4.7 million. In order to complete the project based on the construction estimate that we received, it would require $5.8 million to complete that project. That left you with roughly $1.1 million that we needed to cover, and we utilized existing monies within the CIP program that had not been earmarked, and utilized those funds to cover that cost.
Okay. And the, on the fire and rescue capital allocation increase, $407,000? Is that for new trucks and ambulances and stuff?
That's correct.
So what will they be receiving if this is approved?
It's roughly $1.7, almost $1.8 million.
Okay. Thank you.
Mark, thank you. Mark, thank you for the presentation. Just going back on the lighting for the Creed Fields, is that all been completed?
At our last Parks and Rec meeting, it was very close to being awarded. And then I don't know what the status is of construction, but they were within days of awarding the contract for those lights.
Yeah, there's $1.1 million left on that project to complete the lighting. My understanding is, is that they're going to try and have that work done. Part of it maybe before the end of this fiscal year, and the remaining balance between now and the end of the year. So that project will be complete hopefully by the end of summer, maybe fall of this year.
Very good. Any other follow-up questions?
Madam Chair, I just, I do want to reiterate again, excuse me. Once we have better information on the Auburn proposed indoor facility for the board to consider, we'll be back in front of you with that. We have been working with one engineering firm that did the original design of the park, but once the concept of a facility began to be discussed, we wanted to get another firm to put their eyes on it to give us an estimate. And the numbers we're seeing so far, I don't, we have some concerns. So we're just going to make sure those are correct before we bring them in front of y'all to talk about them, so.
So on the drawing for the Auburn Park, you don't even have anything as it relates to a facility?
No, we have a, we have a multipurpose field that is located directly behind the Reiner Fire Department, and that is the field where an indoor facility would likely be constructed. But since it was graded to be a multipurpose field and not a building pad for a facility, we're having to get better numbers on that. And then, as you well know, right now with construction costs, we're really trying to hone in on a better number for an estimate for construction.
There's a copy of that map in the document that we passed out.
I guess the next question would be, how soon can we start on some of these projects?
If you, if you look, what's cool about this, I get super excited about the capital program.
He really does. He was skipping through the office today.
No, I mean, you know, here's the thing, you know, I think I've said this before, but, you know, putting the operating budget together, I love that. But it's hard to see the fruits of your labor, so to speak. I mean, from the outside, you know, things get done. It's hard to put a picture on that. But when you drive by a facility that was built, or you see kids playing on a baseball field, you get to see the fruit of your labor right there in front of you. So it's important, you know, for me to be able to, you know, I can see the work that's getting done on these projects, and it's important, so. But if you go through and you look at each individual project, you will see when the construction is estimated to begin and end on each project. So certainly you can look at, if we just went down through these real quick, you can see, you know, the government-centered projects are underway. The consolidated garage is nearly complete. And then as you go down through each one of these projects, you can see when, when construction is going to start and when it's going to be end. There's going to be a lot of projects that are going to be underway at one time. I believe the last project to be completed on this CIP is the library project.
Very good, and I see that now, going through all the books at the end, you have project milestones. So we're going to advertise for construction in the summer of 2023 for the magistrate and court service facility with the Sally Port.
Yes, ma'am.
With construction to begin in the fall.
And partly because all the ARPA money has to be spent by the end of?
26.
But that's not fiscal year, it's?
It's calendar year.
Right.
That'll actually be fiscal year 27, but December 31st, 2026, yep.
And as you look through the document, the schedules that Mark referred to that show when the construction will take place, you can tell if they're fully funded based on the very first column. It shows at the bottom of the schedule when the funding proceeds have been allocated.
Very good.
I have one question.
Certainly, Supervisor Bone.
And it sort of relates, but mostly doesn't. Is there a minimum dollar amount to issue a bond?
I don't know that there is. I can't say that I have an answer for that.
It's not a million.
Generally speaking.
Is it 10? Is it?
Generally speaking, you want to sell bonds in larger blocks because you need to have buyers that are willing to buy it. And generally, institutional companies buy them up. So like, if you wanted to buy a Montgomery County bond, you probably wouldn't be able to buy them directly. You'd have to go on the secondary market to buy it. And so what happens is when we do a bond sale, they get issued out. We have bidders that kind of pre-bid on them, and then they get liquidated within minutes. And then to pick them up, they get picked up on the secondary market. So generally speaking.
How much is a block?
Usually $5 to $10 million. I mean, they can be smaller than that, but, you know, generally, you don't want to go to market unless you have a significant need to go forward.
And the other, the other big piece of that is, there's a lot of fixed costs associated with a bond issue, underwriting fees, attorney's fees, rating agency fees. So you usually try to maximize your.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Very good. Mark, thank you as always. Thank you for this presentation. Look forward to starting these projects. Okay. All right. Next up, um, the budget.
Well, we wanted to have this opportunity for the board this evening, um, and I wanna mention something before we forget it again. I meant to mention it at the beginning of the meeting. Vice Chair Biggs is away this evening, uh, due to a medical procedure tomorrow, but I know she's listening in via live stream, so, um, Mary, I hope things are going well with you this evening and, um, we'll look forward to hearing from you if you have any questions or concerns from tonight. We just put this on the agenda this evening. We've got, we have several meetings left before we're slated to approve the budget on, uh, April twenty-fourth. Uh, we have a regular board meeting next Monday night. We have the budget public hearing on the budget where we usually don't take, or we don't discuss the budget that evening, it's just a public hearing. That's next Thursday, the thirteenth. We do not have a meeting scheduled for Monday, April seventeenth at the moment, but that's certainly something that if the board feels there's a need, we can do that. And then our, um, regular meeting on Monday, April twenty-fourth is for the approval of the budget. But all that being said, we wanted to give you time this evening if there are any questions that have come up, if there's anything that, uh, you would like some clarification on while Mark's here and Brad, Angie and I are here. I see the sheriff's here this evening too, so we'll be glad to try to help with anything that we can if there are any questions. And if there are no questions, that's certainly your prerogative as well.
We'll just go around the room, um, start off this time with Supervisor Shepherd.
I, I don't have any questions at this time.
Supervisor Bone.
I don't either. Thank you.
Supervisor Demonts.
I don't have any questions that have not been answered yet. T B C.
Okay, Supervisor King.
No questions right now. Thank you.
Supervisor Fidzikowski.
Yeah, just, just one, um, were there any, um, requests for monies for the collective bargaining that the, uh, school board is pursuing, uh, in their, in their asks?
Not, not that I'm aware of. I can find out and make sure that there are none in the funding requests that they sent to you.
Okay, 'cause the only thing I've heard is that, and, and I haven't heard this directly, was that it wasn't gonna be much, but I didn't hear a actual dollar figure of what they're expecting, so, uh...
I'll get that for ya.
Thank you.
Um, I think this would be a good time. I've had some citizens call about collective bargaining, um, and we had a public speaker last week that, um, and sent an email asking for us to make a resolution, uh, for the collective bargaining. Um, and we wanted to explain to the citizens how the school board is a separate and elected board and under this new code section, they will have the sole authority over that collective bargaining and we'll, we'll refer that to Mr. Marty, our legal advisor. Would you just explain that? I think it's a good opportunity just to make sure our citizens understand. And there were some also, um, some calls about possible referendum on this. Explain how that works.
Right. As, as everybody knows, we're in a, you know, the Dillon Rule state in Virginia and localities can only do what the state specifically grants us the authority to do. And recently the legislature, the General Assembly did grant the authority for collective bargaining in, at the governmental level. And in that statute, they specifically stated that, that the, um, that the school board is also a, a entity like a city, town and county. Um, and so if, if your employees wanna collectively bargain, then the governing body for the county, city or town, or for the school board has to approve. And so, um, this board would only auth, could only authorize and set parameters for, for county employees and the same runs for the school board. The school board has the authority to set parameters and authorize, if they so choose, collective bargaining for their employees. So the county does not have any, um, you know, legal authority to, to get involved in, in whether the, uh, school board elects to grant collective bargaining or not. So it's, it's pretty simple. The, the referendum question was, well, can that be, can a question be brought to the voters of the county on whether they should have collective bargaining or not? And so the, the way that rule works, it's the same thing as Dillon Rule. Localities can only, uh, they're only authorized to do referendums that the, that the legislature, that the General Assembly specifically allows them to do. Um, I haven't looked at the, whether there's authority to do it, but my guess is there isn't and I'll, I'll, I'll confirm that. The reason I think there isn't is because they've given you the authority already to legislatively decide whether you wanna have it or not. And so this board has the authority to not do anything and then, uh, which means there is no collective bargaining. Or you could on your own say, we want collective bargaining at the county employee level. Or the other thing that, that could happen is if the employees come to you and say, we want to collect a bargain, then the board has to make a decision at that point whether to allow them or not. But you have the authority to say yea or nay. And so the, that may, it would make no sense then to also grant a referendum on that same question. 'Cause generally referendums come up when, well, do, you know, where, you're not given authority to do something unless the people are vote to, um, authorize it. And so that's my educated guess at this point, and I'll confirm that, but I, I don't think we'll find authority for that.
And to, for clarification, that is for collective bargaining for our county employees?
Or, or any level, yeah.
Or at any level?
Yeah, for, for school board too, yeah, I would say. Same, same analysis, yeah.
Okay. And so just wanted to make that clear for our citizens. And then, as I understand with, um, from just the draft, um, from the school for their collective bargaining, it does have a little sentence in there that says, of course, that all the funding would be depended upon the funding source, which would be the Board of Supervisors for that.
Which is subject to appropriation, right?
Right. Okay. And so is that, and so my concern with collective bargaining, even though I don't have a vote on that for the collective bargaining, so we wanna make sure our citizens know that this board does not have authority to vote or set those parameters for that, um, is that the impact that it comes back to the county if, and I know right now they're saying, uh, that, you know, it's not salary, but Dr. Breagan told me that eventually that's what it'll go to, that once you do collective bargaining, it's gonna be here to stay. Um, so that's the, the impact, um, long-term that I'm concerned about. And as a board, even if, since they don't do line items, could the overall cost of collective bargaining administratively, would, could that be just considered an operational cost day-to-day for them?
I would say probably, yeah. But, I mean, you could ask them, you know, what, what's the anticipated cost of that at this moment? And, and I think that cost will probably center around setting it up or maybe getting legal, legal help to do it. Um, I'm sure there's gonna be a cost there. Um, and then, you know, maybe they have an idea what the result, resulting cost would be? You know, like working conditions, it means it's gonna cost more or, like you said, pay raises that they want, you know, things of that nature that would cost more.
And still, this board would just be for the funding. We would not make the decisions on, uh, school employees getting raises or not, who gets fired, who gets hired. None of that is this board's decision.
Correct.
Correct. I just wanna make sure for clarification.
Including whether they do it or how they do it. Yeah, neither one do you have authority to, to do, right?
Just wanted to make sure we, make sure our citizens are clear because we're getting, I'm getting quite a few calls about, is that my vote? And it is not this board's vote. Any other comments? Supervisor Fidzikowski.
Yes, I, I still continue, and I expect some of you do too, um, calls from citizens that are worried about the tax rate. Of course, I, I've explained to them that we have thrown out this number of seventy-three cents, that it can't go up from there, but it could go down. I also know that the Board of Equalization is done. They're, they've completed their, their task and, um, I don't know if anybody can answer. Do we know how that has affected our revenue?
We don't know yet. They're, um, finalizing the, those amounts. They have a work session, the BOE, without hearings tomorrow and again, ne, one day next week to wrap everything up and then we'll have more for you at that time.
Okay. Is there any sign of a significant change one way or the other?
It, it won't be enough to change the penny value, I don't think. I don't, or the ra, the neutral rate.
Okay. And, you know, um, I know that the board looked at, a lot of folks, uh, I've had, I've heard from others that have said that, yeah, they've had some adjustments made and they were apparently satisfied with the adjustments. But there are still quite a few out there that didn't get any relief for one reason or another and, uh, and so that every penny in tax increase affects them in a bigger way, 'cause now their, um, property has, has a higher value on it. So, um, I wanna say first, before I make my next comment, how appreciative I am of our administration, working very hard to try to come up with a budget that covers all the bases as best we can. It's still hard for me to believe with a seven million dollar increase that we don't have enough to cover, but, um, when I look around the county and talk to, um, um, business owners and what have you, and when they explain how their costs have gone up, that explains why our costs have gone up the same way. But with that said, I really would like to see us lower the tax increase. That's, um, and I don't know where the appropriate places to cut, but I'm sure there's usually always some things that we can slim down, but, uh, I really would like to see that, uh, drop back even more, but that's all I got.
To where?
How about seventy cents?
And do you have any idea?
I think we've played this game before.
No, no, no. No, I wanna understand, do you have any ideas of where?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like it to be at the seventy cent level.
No, where we're gonna cut the extra three cents out of.
I think it's gonna have to be in, I'm not really in favor of doing across-the-board percentage cut, but I'm looking at things that we don't need this year or in this coming budget that can wait to maybe the next budget. But no, I, I, I don't have a list of things to cut.
Are, are you or is the board going to ask the administration to come up with some ideas for us?
I guess when we vote on it, they'll have no choice but to come up with something if we vote it down.
We can...
I would hope that they're, they have some ideas in their head that some things can be maybe slimmed down a little bit.
So we don't deserve, the county doesn't deserve any inflation adjustment?
Yeah, uh, seven point one million was our increase in revenue. That's a lot. That's way more than we, our, our average, which is usually between two and three.
But that's how much? It was like, that's not even six percent. I don't know. We'll have to figure that out.
Yeah. I mean, it'd be nice to make sure that we're covering our increased costs.
What we can do, what staff can, can work towards, and we did this, gosh, it's been several years ago, I, I remember the columns where we said we, this is, here's, here's options if you decide to go to seventy-two. Here are options if you go to seventy-one. Here are options if you go to seventy. None of the, I will just make that clear, none of those are recommendations from...
Right.
Administration. They're just options that then you, as an elected body, can say, well, yeah, I'm out, that one I'm good with, no, I don't wanna do that. And then you can sort through this.
I'd much rather have that information before we actually vote on the budget.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
We generally don't provide that before the public hearing, though. We usually give it to you after the public hearing.
That's fine, yeah.
As long as we have that information.
Which may be if you decide, you know, and I hate to add meetings into anybody's calendars, but, um, after the public hearing, if you decide you want a meeting on Monday, April seventeenth to have that discussion before you get to a vote on Monday, April twenty-fourth, that's, that's up to the board.
Right, 'cause of course the tax rate will be depended upon what we vote on the budget because if we vote on the budget being the two hundred and thirty-nine, that is with the proposed three cent tax increase. Um, at the revenue neutral of seventy, that would be three point six million dollars less. And is that correct?
Pretty close.
Am I saying that right? Close, um, for that budget. So we would have to, I would assume, vote on the tax rate first, then we'll need to work and adjust that budget for that.
Yes, ma'am.
But we don't have to do that immediately, right? You just pass the, like...
The same night we would...
Do we have to do it?
On April twenty-fourth, you need to adopt the...
Both.
The tax rate, real estate tax rate and the approved budget. Now, I, I'm saying that wrong, fix it.
The tax rate, all of the tax rates and the total approved budget and the budget by fund is included in that generally if, but we could adjust that when the appropriation is done.
That's what I was trying to say.
The total budget is adopted generally the night of the tax rate adoption. I think one year, we might not have done that when there was a big issue with the school funding from the state, when we thought that they were gonna de-allocate money.
Yes.
So we waited and did that a little bit later, but that's generally what we do.
Yeah, we, we appropriate, I'm using the wrong word, we approve the budget on April twenty-fourth, adopt the budget and then we approve the allocation of the budget usually in June.
That's right. The first meeting in June, we usually appropriate the budget for the following year so that July first, the money's ready to go.
So we have to vote on that tax rate first because if you're only gonna have a certain amount at seventy cents, you don't, you can't do a budget higher than that because you don't have the funds. So that's why we do the rate for the tax rate first, then that will set the precedent of what the budget would be and then...
But that's on a high level as opposed to?
The specific items that you're gonna reduce, that's correct.
Right.
It's not on the specific?
It is not.
Right. And even so, we can switch it around if we want, we can fungible it.
You can, it's, we need to know if possible by the first meeting in Ju, well, before the first meeting in June, so we can prepare the appropriation resolution for you if we can do. And the schools have to approve their budget by what date? May first.
Yeah, and the cha, and as you probably well know, I, um, I have no idea when we're gonna know what the state budget is this year. They've made it clear they're, excuse me, they're taking their time, uh, in reviewing things, which is certainly their prerogative, but it really creates some challenges, especially, uh, when both the House and the Senate had recommended increasing the salary increases for, for teachers and state employees from five to seven percent. And that's what we're basing our budget on as well, but I have no idea if they're gonna have that approved anytime soon.
Just for clarification, once we do the tax rate and then we vote on the budget, we would at that point decide to the school's budget, correct? Are you saying that that, we'd have to have an idea of what we're, what we're gonna cut the challenges? We would need to have some idea?
Right. They need to know the amount to adopt with, for May first. They have to have a budget in place. If you changed it later, they could change theirs as well, but that runs into issues that have to do with their, um, hiring their teachers and issuing contracts and that kinda thing.
So if we, if we approved seventy cent real estate tax rate, you could easily say, well, let's just use last year's budget, 'cause you're not increasing, it's revenue neutral, everything's the same.
Not exactly.
Okay, so what's different?
Three point six million dollars, right?
We had new revenue of over seven million dollars. You would have to decide where that's gonna go, if that's gonna go to the county or the schools or where it's gonna go. The value of the penny still changed, you'd have to figure out if you want that to still go in the transfers like it has in the past. There are many things you would still need to decide. It's, the tax rate for real estate is revenue neutral, but there's other kinds of growth and then part of, we'll get into this at a different meeting, but part of the seven million dollar increase in funding for twenty-four is not growth, it's catching up revenue from previous years. And, um, what I mean by that is, sales tax was strong, we didn't think it was gonna stay as strong as it did. Now we've added basically growth from a previous year, but I didn't want anyone to think that in fiscal year twenty-four, we're gonna have seven million... want anyone to think that in fiscal year '24, we're gonna have $7 million of growth again, because it's gonna go back to normal trend of $2 or $3 million.
So the operational budget could grow by $2 to $3 billion?
That's traditionally how much, what it's grown by, yes.
So we have 7.1 million forecast or more than we usually do, usually around that 2.5, but we could also have some additional growth?
Oh, no, that was for future years.
Future, okay.
'25 and so forth. I didn't want there to be a misperception that that 7.1?
Gonna keep growing it.
Will happen every year.
Right, so this is, yeah, usually we have two points, so usually about 2.5 million, and now we're at 7.1 that we have.
Right.
And that is at keeping the real estate tax rate at 70 cents?
Yes.
Which is revenue neutral.
Yes, ma'am.
And one penny is worth $1,175,000. Any other further comments or questions? It'll be challenging, but we'll have to vote on that tax rate first. Do you have a?
I do have one question. Do we know how much inflation has affected our operations?
That is such a broad question.
I know.
You asked us that at a different meeting, and Mark and I talked about it, and it, you can't, I don't, we don't know how to quantify that. There are so many factors. You have to decide, do you think pay is an inflationary factor? That people's pay going up, is that an inflationary factor? You, there are so many things to take into consideration.
So if we keep it, if we keep it at 70 cents, does that mean there is no way that we can give our employees a raise?
No, that would be a priority of the board.
Right. But that means that amount of money is gonna come out of some other line item.
It would mean that, yeah, that the other three cents are gonna come out of some other line item.
Means out of that $239 million budget, we'll have to go back and give you options to reduce that by up to 3.6 million, and then you decide which priorities you want to take that from. Could be raises, could be schools, could be EMS, could be SROs, it could be a whole gamut of things, that's.
And it could be things like Supervisor Fidzikowski said, that we, you know, might not start this year or do that we can cut. It's gonna be very, very challenging, because with $7.1 million and inflation affecting our citizens, obviously last year I tried to lower the real estate tax rate, so I'd like for us to stay at the revenue neutral. Do I have a motion to come out of work session?
Motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Madam McClarkefield, please call the roll.
Supervisor Shepherd?
Aye.
Supervisor Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Supervisor King?
Aye.
Supervisor Demonts?
Aye.
Supervisor Bone?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Six aye.
All right, anything else? We stand adjourned.